Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, call the meeting to order any items from the public. Items from the public, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, anybody have anything for Tracy?
What is Twisted Trump?
Twisted Trump? It's a tree trimming service. It used to be Cut Right Tree Services. And they sold and then were purchased by that new company.
In fact, they just did some tree trimming work for the water district. Took some trees down.
Yeah, we've had two instances. One where a tree came down on the new fence around the 911 center which we had trimmed. And then we had another instance where in the same area, there was some trees and debris up against the communications line. So we figured why they were there, we just have that taken care of also. That way when the winter comes and the snow builds up, we don't have to worry about.
With ice and snow.
I see where you got a bunch of shingles stocked on a couple roofs.
The roof of 800 is being taken off today. That building will be under construction. And then as soon as they finish the repairs on the soft insulation gutter downstairs about roof of 800, then they'll be doing animal control.
So I've never been in the animal control. I'd like to go in there and look. I've had a few complaints recently about the animal control.
There's animals in there.
Well, and the issue was about the animals, that the animals were in there and it was about 100 degrees in where the animals are being kept.
Well, that's not entirely true. We had some split units in there. Well, where they were vented, the animal control was actually closed then. So that the air was circulating, the hot air was circulating back in. So we opened that up. We also had two additional, just within the past month, had two additional air conditioning units donated, some of the larger. So our facilities department has installed that. So that has been addressed.
Well, this is the person that was in there two weeks ago. And they said they were in there two weeks ago and there was some portable units in there, but they weren't running.
But they're hooked up now.
Okay.
So it should be resolved. And I have not heard anything, but I'll double check it for you. But you're welcome to go down anytime.
Right. Maybe I'll just stop down there and walk through and check it out. You ever been to that?
Oh, yeah.
I haven't been to that.
Yeah, I had one doggy lockup. I had to go get bailed out one time.
You did?
Yeah, I used to go down there for rabies.
Are you good?
Well, I had the shots.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm good there.
Did you get your distemper?
No, I just had rabies shot.
Rabies, okay. All righty, do you not have any internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Okay, change in status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Rachel or Rochelle, which one is it?
Rachel.
Rachel Peterson as a part-time driver with an hourly rate of 1550 effective August 16th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from Circuit Clerk's Office for Desert Ray Knighton effective July 30th, 2021. Per Jennifer Swisher, 911 director removed our Donna Woods from payroll and place her as a contractual employee effective August 15th, 2021. Anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes, Councilperson Doak and I was not here, so we have to pull those.
Well, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve those July 22nd, 2021 minutes as presented.
I have a motion to have a second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, anybody have anything for Tracy?
What is Twisted Trump?
Twisted Trump? It's a tree trimming service. It used to be Cut Right Tree Services. And they sold and then were purchased by that new company.
In fact, they just did some tree trimming work for the water district. Took some trees down.
Yeah, we've had two instances. One where a tree came down on the new fence around the 911 center which we had trimmed. And then we had another instance where in the same area, there was some trees and debris up against the communications line. So we figured why they were there, we just have that taken care of also. That way when the winter comes and the snow builds up, we don't have to worry about.
With ice and snow.
I see where you got a bunch of shingles stocked on a couple roofs.
The roof of 800 is being taken off today. That building will be under construction. And then as soon as they finish the repairs on the soft insulation gutter downstairs about roof of 800, then they'll be doing animal control.
So I've never been in the animal control. I'd like to go in there and look. I've had a few complaints recently about the animal control.
There's animals in there.
Well, and the issue was about the animals, that the animals were in there and it was about 100 degrees in where the animals are being kept.
Well, that's not entirely true. We had some split units in there. Well, where they were vented, the animal control was actually closed then. So that the air was circulating, the hot air was circulating back in. So we opened that up. We also had two additional, just within the past month, had two additional air conditioning units donated, some of the larger. So our facilities department has installed that. So that has been addressed.
Well, this is the person that was in there two weeks ago. And they said they were in there two weeks ago and there was some portable units in there, but they weren't running.
But they're hooked up now.
Okay.
So it should be resolved. And I have not heard anything, but I'll double check it for you. But you're welcome to go down anytime.
Right. Maybe I'll just stop down there and walk through and check it out. You ever been to that?
Oh, yeah.
I haven't been to that.
Yeah, I had one on Doggie Lockup. I had to go get bailed out one time.
You did?
Yeah, I used to go down there for rabies.
Are you good?
Well, I had the shots.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm good there.
Did you get your distemper?
No, I just had rabies shot.
Rabies, okay. All righty, do you not have any internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Okay, change in status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Rachel or Rochelle, which one is it?
Rachel.
Rachel Peterson as a part-time driver with an hourly rate of 1550 effective August 16th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from Circuit Clerk's Office for Desert Ray Knighton effective July 30th, 2021. Per Jennifer Swisher, 911 director removed our Donna Woods from payroll and place her as a contractual employee effective August 15th, 2021. Anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes, Councilperson Doak and I was not here, so we have to pull those.
Well, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve those July 22nd, 2021 minutes as presented.
I have a motion to have a second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, anybody have anything for Tracy?
What is Twisted Trump?
Twisted Trump? It's a tree trimming service. It used to be Cut Right Tree Services. And they sold and then were purchased by that new company.
In fact, they just did some tree trimming work for the water district. Took some trees down.
Yeah, we've had two instances. One where a tree came down on the new fence around the 911 center which we had trimmed. And then we had another instance where in the same area, there was some trees and debris up against the communications line. So we figured why they were there, we just have that taken care of also. That way when the winter comes and the snow builds up, we don't have to worry about.
With ice and snow.
I see where you got a bunch of shingles stocked on a couple roofs.
The roof of 800 is being taken off today. That building will be under construction. And then as soon as they finish the repairs on the soft insulation gutter downstairs about roof of 800, then they'll be doing animal control.
So I've never been in the animal control. I'd like to go in there and look. I've had a few complaints recently about the animal control.
There's animals in there.
Well, and the issue was about the animals, that the animals were in there and it was about 100 degrees in where the animals are being kept.
Well, that's not entirely true. We had some split units in there. Well, where they were vented, the animal control was actually closed then. So that the air was circulating, the hot air was circulating back in. So we opened that up. We also had two additional, just within the past month, had two additional air conditioning units donated, some of the larger. So our facilities department has installed that. So that has been addressed.
Well, this is the person that was in there two weeks ago. And they said they were in there two weeks ago and there was some portable units in there, but they weren't running.
But they're hooked up now.
Okay.
So it should be resolved. And I have not heard anything, but I'll double check it for you. But you're welcome to go down anytime.
Right. Maybe I'll just stop down there and walk through and check it out. You ever been to that?
Oh, yeah.
I haven't been to that.
Yeah, I had one on Doggy Lockup. I had to go get bailed out one time.
You did?
Yeah, I used to go down there for rabies.
Are you good?
Well, I had the shots.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm good there.
Did you get your distemper?
No, I just had rabies shot.
Rabies, okay. All righty, do you not have any internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Okay, change in status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Rachel or Rochelle, which one is it?
Rachel.
Rachel Peterson as a part-time driver with an hourly rate of 1550 effective August 16th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from Circuit Clerk's Office for Desert Ray Knighton effective July 30th, 2021. Per Jennifer Swisher, 911 director removed our Donna Woods from payroll and place her as a contractual employee effective August 15th, 2021. Anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes, Councilperson Doak and I was not here, so we have to pull those.
Well, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve those July 22nd, 2021 minutes as presented.
I have a motion to have a second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed.
Stand for a minute.
Okay. And we go down through here to council calendars. Let's see, maybe we're meeting here today Thursday on the 5th, next Thursday on the 12th. Board and commission calendars, nothing here today. Next week at 2:30, L E P C, 5:00 PM Water District, 6:00 PM Farm Land Protection. Nothing on the 10th. On the 11th, 9:30 AM Development Authority, 6:00 PM Roundhouse Authority, and 6:30 the Fire Board on Thursday.
Mr. President, if I may, just a couple things, some general housekeeping. We had originally scheduled a done building master plan meeting for today at 2:00 to bring all the stakeholders in. Josh Bauer, who is, who you all know, he was the architect working on that with Crabtree, actually fell 30 feet and broke some bones and messed himself up. So he's not driving right now, so of course he's not coming up from Charlottesville. So we postponed that meeting and it will be rescheduled. Just to remember, just a reminder that on the 19th, we will have the holiday meeting with executive session in the afternoon for the free, our chief interviews, which I've been set up and confirmed. And last but not least, several of you have asked me how we were coming along with the purchase of the Inwood property. As you know, the Phase 1 environmental site assessment was completed on July 16th and that's clear. Mr. Roberts has submitted the plat application and checklist to the planning department yesterday. So that, everything should be taken care of. But we, by the end of the week, we do have tentatively closing set for August 17th at 1:00. We're ending up with 22.9937 acres, which is 43 acres, at the purchase price of 15,000 and acres. So the total cost of that parcel, which you've already encumbered from last year, will be $344,905.50.
What time did you say closing was? 1:00?
August 17th at 1:00.
Is, where is that at?
In that country, doing that.
Conrad.
Conrad. Can somebody send me an invite? I'd like to go to that, just to thank John Good.
Are you saying?
Yeah.
Sure, and you could actually sign for, he was requiring me to get a, the power of attorney to sign on behalf of the council, which I can say any, sign. I think that you signed.
Right. Would the council have to approve that for me to do that?
They could just give you the authority.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go to that, just to thank John.
Do you need a motion for that?
I think for the record, that way if there's any question.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to give Dan Doye the authority to sign the contract for the purchase of the property at Inwood.
Actually, contract has been signed, it would be all the closing documents.
Closing documents for the Inwood part, for lack of a better term.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just a question. Not that it wasn't an agenda item, but is there any questions? Just to give that.
No, okay. Speaking of spending money, what's the status of our, what, 11 billion or 100 billion?
Hold on, man, let me call for the question, then we'll.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed?
You did that already, no?
I did, but I just, I'd had a call.
What's the status of the money that's in the bank for the COVID?
That recovery?
Yeah.
We received half of, the first half of the, what's, of the 23 million, didn't change. We'll get the second half in six months. We have until the end of 2022 committed.
Well, has we ever gotten the rules and regulations on how to spend?
They changed. So there has been some discussion. As the rules originally came out, it was pretty restricted. It could have been used for broadband and primarily broadband water and sewer projects.
Pretty restrictive.
It was very, very restrictive. Now they're opening it up, saying that you can use it for reimbursement of public safety expenses that are lost, expenses and lost revenues from last year. So what I think Council President Doak and I, his intent is in the next week or so to discuss this with the council in public session and recommend that a committee be established to look at the regulations and recommend how the money should be used. Tracy Williams, who you all know, who's our trans administrator, like she did with the first phase of the COVID money, she's kind of become the resident expert on that. She certainly will be a member of that committee.
Yeah, because I have several uses I'd like to put some money to, but I don't know if it's applicable or, I have no idea what's going on with those rules.
Well, we are checking now to see whether we can use it for bricks and mortar. And if not, response back.
That would be the optimal thing, to use it for bricks and mortar, because technically not a reoccurring expense every year. And that would be more prudent than putting it towards.
Although it does create recurring.
Well, it does, but not to the effect of, you know.
It's easier for, for example, municipalities to use it for water and sewer projects.
Yeah.
Because they have their own, you know, they have their own departments, not too much for counties. So I know that there's been a lot of discussion going on about what's the purpose.
Finish the repairs on the soft innovation gutter down south roof of eight hundred. Then I'll be doing animal control.
So I've never been in the animal control. I like to go in there and look. I had, I've had a few complaints recently about the animal control.
There's animals in there.
Well, there's, and, and the issue was about the animals, that the animals were in there. Um, and, uh, and it was about a hundred degrees in where the animals are being kept.
Well, that, that's not entirely true. Um, we had some split units in there. Well, where they were vented, the animal control was actually closed event. So that the air was circled, the hot air was circulating back in. So we opened that up. We also had two additional, just within the past month, had two additional air conditioning units donated, some of the larger. So our facilities department has installed that. So that has been addressed.
Well, this is, this is the person that was in there two weeks ago, and they said they were in there two weeks ago, and there was, there was some portable units in there, but they weren't running.
But they, they're hooked up now.
Okay.
So it should be resolved, and I have not heard anything, but I'll, I'll double check for you. But you're welcome to go down anytime.
Right. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll just stop down there and walk through and check it out. You ever been to that?
Oh, yeah.
But I haven't been to that.
Yeah, I had one on doggy lockup. I had to go get nailed out one time.
You did?
Yeah, I actually got it for rabies for a long time.
Are you good?
I'm, well, I had the shots.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm good now.
Did you get your distemper?
No, I just had rabies shot.
Rabies, okay. All righty, uh, do you not have any internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
A change in status, status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Rachel or Rochelle? Which one is it? Uh, Rachel.
Rachel.
Peterson as a part-time, uh, driver with an hourly rate of fifteen fifty effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Letter of resignation received from Circuit Clerk's Office for Desert Ray Knighton effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, per Jennifer Swisher, nine-one-one director, remove our Donald Woods from payroll and place her as a contractual employee effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes. Uh, Councilperson Doak and I was not here, so we have all those.
Well, Mr. President, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve those July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one minutes as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed?
Stay for.
Okay. And we go down through here to council calendars. Uh, let's see. Maybe we're meeting here today, Thursday on the fifth, next Thursday on the twelfth. Uh, board and commission calendars. Uh, nothing here today. Uh, next week at two thirty, L E P C, five P M. Water District, six P M. Farm Land Protection. Nothing on the tenth. On the eleventh, nine thirty A M. Development Authority, six P M. Roundhouse Authority, and six thirty, the Fire Board on Thursday.
Mr. President, if I may, um, just a couple of things. Some house, general housekeeping. Uh, we had originally scheduled a done building master plan meeting for today at two o'clock to bring all the stakeholders in. Josh Bauer, who is, who you all know, um, he was the architect working on that with Crabtree, actually fell thirty feet and broke some, some bones and messed himself up. So he's not driving right now. So of course, he's not coming up from Charlottesville. So we postponed that meeting, and it will be rescheduled. Um, just to remember, just a reminder that on the nineteenth, we will have the, an all-day meeting with executive session in the afternoon, free, our chief, um, interviews, which I've been set up and confirmed. And last but not least, um, several of you have asked me how we were coming along with the purchase of the Inwood property. Um, as you know, the, um, phase one environmental site assessment was completed on July sixteenth, and that, that's clear. Um, Mr. Roberts has submitted the plat, uh, application and checklist to the planning department yesterday. Um, so that, everything should be taken care of. But we, by the, the end of the week, um, we do have tentatively closing set for August seventeenth at one o'clock. Um, we're ending up with twenty-two point nine nine three seven acres, which is forty-three acres, uh, at the purchase price of fifteen thousand and acres. So the total cost of that parcel, which you've already encountered from last year, um, will be three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and fifty cents.
What time did you say closing was? One o'clock?
August seventeenth at one.
Is, uh, where is that at?
Uh, in that country, doing that.
Conrad. Can, uh, can, can, can somebody send me an invite? I'd like to go to that, just to, uh, thank John Good.
Closing?
Yeah.
Sure, and, uh, I'd, uh, you could actually sign for, he was requiring me to get a, a done-in power of attorney to sign on behalf of the council, which doesn't say any, it does sign. I think council, that use, sign.
Right. Does, that, would then the coun, would the council have to approve that for me to do that?
They could just give you the authority.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to go to that, just to thank John.
Need a motion for that?
I think for the record, that way if there's any question.
Um, Mr. President, I'd like to move to give Dan Doye the authority to sign the contract for the, uh, purchase of the property at Inwood.
Actually, contract has been signed. It'd be all the closing.
So the closing documents for the Inwood part, for lack of a better term.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just a question. Um, not that it wasn't an agenda item, but is there any questions? Just to give that. No, okay.
Oh, speaking of spending money, what's the status of our, what, eleven million or a hundred million?
Hold on, man. Let me call for the question, then we'll.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I have called for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed?
Motion carries.
You did that already, no?
I did, but I just, I'd had a call.
Uh, what's the status of the money that's in the bank for the COVID?
That recovery?
Yeah.
Um, we received half of, the first half of the, what's, of the twenty-three million that didn't change. Um, we'll get the second half in six months. We have until the end of twenty twenty-two committed.
Well, has we ever gotten the, the rules and regulations on how it's been?
They changed. Um, so there has been some, some discussion. Um, as, as the rules originally came out, it was pretty restricted. It could be, it could have been used for broadband, um, and primarily broadband water and sewer projects.
Pretty restrictive.
It, it was very, very restricted. Now they're, they're opening it up, saying that, um, you can use it for reimbursement of public safety expenses, um, that, or, uh, lost, or expenses and lost revenues from, from last year. So what I think Council President Copen Haver's intent is in the next week or so to discuss this with the council in, in public session and recommend that a committee be established to look at the regulations, um, and recommend how the, the, um, the money should be, should be used. Um, Tracy Gilliam's, um, who you all know, who's our trans administrator, like, like, um, she did with, um, with the, their, the, the first phase of the COVID money. She's kind of become the, the resident expert on that. She certainly will be a member of that committee.
Yeah, because, yeah, I have several uses. I'd like to put some money too, and, but I don't know if it's applicable, or, you know, I have no idea what's going on with those rules.
We are checking now to see whether we can use it for bricks and mortar, um, and if not, got response back.
That would be the optimal thing, to use it for bricks and mortar, because technically not a reoccurring expense every year. And that would be more prudent than putting it towards.
You know, although it does create recurring.
Oh, well, it does, but not to the fact of, you know.
It's easier for, for example, municipalities to use it for water and sewer projects.
Yeah.
Because they have their own, you know, they have their own department. It's not, not so much for, for counties. So I know that there's been, you know, a lot of discussion going on about, you know, like, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. Um, there's just something on lists or guests that Joe Tull had asked about, that her, that her check-in to, so.
Um, what did I see? What the heck was that? It was for.
I thought it was putting up a water, selling a tile or something. Maybe not.
Might, might have been. I don't remember what it was. I did see that.
It had something to do with recreation. I remember. I did shred it last night, but I forgot about it all again.
Yeah. I don't remember. I didn't think it was that far down. I remember seeing it on there. Um, it was a question that was asked from the lifts there, that they were chiming in on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got an urgent message here. Just. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
On the, uh, cancelled check request from the, uh, county clerk's office for, a couple of them here. Check number, we just, you call those off or just go?
You just approve.
Just for the approval request.
Just a, just a clarification. It does include three stop payments on that and one voided.
One voided, okay.
Yes, the three stop payments.
Okay, got that.
Well, they just didn't get their money, huh?
Now they've been lost in the mail.
I think it, it, was it, was it demolition buildings or something for, uh, demolition buildings for beautification or something?
It was using hotel motel packs for beautification projects.
Right.
Now we're running this stuff.
Right.
All righty. It's a motion, motion to, um, approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Uh, nothing from the assessor on, um, assessments?
No, sir.
Okay, board of meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart.
Uh, I'm like the assessor. I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Doya.
Uh, I've been out of town since last week.
How was that?
It was, uh, it was, it was definitely interesting. Definitely interesting.
Just had a planning commission meeting, and it was, uh, well-attended, and, uh, which is usually not a good thing.
I say they usually are.
But, uh, there were some concerns over, uh, rich quest development, uh, some issues there, uh, I've asked staff to look into, and they do have a meeting set up with the developer, um, to try and get some of these issues resolved. I also had a park and rec facilities meeting yesterday, looking at, you know, our different sites to, uh, what they would, what staff in particular, how would prioritize, uh, and to upgrade or, or to improve. And yesterday, we were at the Berkeley two thousand building, and cameras and security is really the, one of the largest concerns. So, uh, Mr. Catlin had reached out to Gary Wine, uh, several weeks ago to try and decide, you know, determine what was needed. So they're working on that, and of course, uh, they'll be getting with Gary when he gets back to, uh, hopefully get that wrapped up. And not only from a safety and security point of view, but also from a liability point of view, uh, to be able to, to get enough cameras, uh, in facilities to protect the staff. Uh, and let's see, Tuesday night, I went to youth fair, and, and several hours down there, nice evening, uh, very well-attended, and children are very happy, and it was a great evening.
What's the status of the general, uh, the administrator, uh, director?
Yes, sir, they're, uh, they now, once they re-advertize, they, they've got it, they're down to two, and they're meeting with both of them tomorrow, uh, take them around to different sites, give them opportunity to speak with some staff, and then, uh, they were, like, do a kind of nail-down type interview with them. Uh, I think only, I don't know if both of them are coming or just one, uh, but will be here on site tomorrow. So they're, they're getting close to getting any companies.
Good.
Yeah, that'll be a rather important position. He's gonna have to hit the ground running.
Yes.
Good Lord.
I was down at the youth fair on Saturday when they were bringing the animals in, and, uh, I guess getting them all registered and weighed and checked in. It was quite the, uh, quite the process going on down there. I'd, uh, I'd say my wife says, well, she wanted to check in a mule down there, so she sent me. Uh, I'd use the other word, but that's okay. Well, hopefully.
We, we get the, we get the picture.
Get the picture, yeah. So anyway, uh, I didn't get checked in, but however, they, it really smokes. All righty, um, board and commission vacancies, reappointment packets, uh, received from the following. I'll go through all those for criminal justice. The term expires August thirty-first. Harold Slaughter, Aaron Gartner, Mike Lang, Lindsey Hash, Catherine Bradley, and Homer Speaker. And, uh, I don't know if they're ready for reappointment chat or, I don't know, receive them.
Mr. President, we also received a correspondence dated July twenty-ninth from the city of Morgansburg. As you know, the mayor, um, by, the bylaws required that the mayor, um, dispute the development authority.
Well, it doesn't, it requires that, and it requires that, um, there's an appointment by the city for, yeah, so the mayor can be the appointment, or they can appoint someone.
And, um, Mayor Barry Johnson had been the appointee of the city, and you took her untimely that, um, they would like the council to appoint Kevin Mills to serve replacement. Give yourself a thought.
This is to the development.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Dolez to replace the remaining term on the development authority, um, for, uh, um, I guess it's probably about two years remaining term on it.
July the eighth, June twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries?
Yeah, he, he will also be an appointee to the region down planning and development council.
Right. I think, I thought those terms were three years. Um, we've got, aren't those appointments three-year terms? Yeah, but hers was, was hers the remainder of George's? Is that why it was? Okay. All right. Gotcha.
Okay. Doak and I?
Yes, sir.
Uh, to, uh, appoint Chris Jones to the park and rec board following the resignation of long-term member, uh, Jerry Williams, who's, uh, served that board, you know, great capacity for a very long period of time. Quite a long, yes, it was. So he's been very committed to the, you know, the park and rec system of other county. So definitely want to thank him for his service, and, uh, would like to have Chris Jones, who we interviewed last week.
You, you want a letter sent to him as well?
I think it's been sent.
Oh, okay.
Jerry Williams?
Yeah, to Jerry.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? We'll let him know that he needs to go see the clerk, uh, be sworn in, or, okay.
I think that's a good, that's, that's a good guy to have on there.
Yeah, he, he seems to be, uh, eyes wide open and want to go forward. Could be a, a nice appointment.
Over a little bit early. Um, fiduciary supervisor.
Mr. Vice President, if you want to do the school resource officer contract, we can do that one.
Okay, let's do that.
Um, as the council's aware, last week in your package was the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school resource officer contract between the Berkeley County Board of Education, Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, and Berkeley County Council. Um, it has been reviewed by Mr. Delegati, uh, and he has approved it. Um, we asked that you table, last week, Council President Copen Haver and I asked that you table it, uh, pending a meeting that he and I had with Dr. Murphy and Dr. Gilken, um, last Thursday afternoon. We have been able to talk about some of the, some of the issues within the contract. Um, and, uh, having said all that, the recommendation is to approve the contract as presented.
Okay. You don't need a motion on that or anything?
Yes, sir, if you would, and authorize.
President or vice president?
President or vice president to sign.
So, so, uh, um, you, you're saying you've modified the contract?
It has not been modified. Um, we are not going to cover all of our costs this year. However, it will be adjusted next year. Um, Council President Copen Haver and I, uh, are meeting with the Board of Education on Monday, the sixteenth, um, to an executive session, um, to talk about pilot agreements and, and some things like that. So that's all part of, of the discussion we had with this.
Okay.
Next year before the contract, because this has already been approved by the Board of Education, um, next year before the contract is approved by anyone, we'll go through and, and make sure that all of our calls are included.
Good.
Make motion. We give the President authority to sign the contract between the Berkeley County Board of Education and Berkeley County Council, or the school resource officer.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Tag it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I didn't chew up enough time.
I know. How about, um, yeah, we just take a quick break, penny, till, um, Will gets here or, uh, Summer. I have, uh, I found the number here. Uh, state, uh, accounts for the month of July, fifty-four states. Is that still the same?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, it's actually down to fifty-three.
Okay.
We're down three. Should I be giving this to you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Uh, as I said, we have fifty-three. Uh, one had been pulled at the request of a family member pending an objection to, uh, getting right to it. Uh, the estate of Dean Thomas Albright, and the estate of Kenneth Raymond Albright, the estate of Dorothy Marie Allen, the estate of Mildred Marie Anderson, the estate of Everett Sidney Barrett, the estate of Harold Bishop, the estate of Faud Chakkar, the estate of Susan R. Chofness, the estate of Paul Savardi, the estate of Edith Virginia Clay, the estate of James Allen Co., the estate of Joanna Lynn Co., the estate of Richard Earl Cole, the estate of Ira Dowan Connor Junior, the estate of Janine DeMoss, the estate of Rosalie Dietz, the estate of James Russell Downs, the estate of David Lee Dykes, the estate of Eleanor Maxine Edwards, the estate of Catherine Josephine Jackson, the estate of Phyllis Johnson, the estate of Joseph R. Jones, the estate of Joe F. Kennedy, the estate of Christine Magdalena Kim, the estate of Phyllis Lee Kidwell Kogelshox, the estate of Francis Louis Koval, Kovalensky, the estate of Hilda Levon Kearns Chris, the estate of Dorothy E. Levin, the estate of Wayne Lee Leonard, the estate of Verona T. Low, the estate of Mary Margaret Mayer, the estate of Joseph W. Miller, the estate of Jos, uh, James Thomas Morris the Third, the estate of Luther L. Murphy, the estate of Roger Lee Mayers Junior, the estate of Nancy Selena P. Fish, the estate of Linda Sue Poole, the estate of Roxanne Powers, the estate of Scott Henry Reiner, the estate of Lucy Carol Weisong Sonier, the estate of Donald W. Schimmel, the estate of Patrick Michael Scherbach, the estate of Evelyn Margaret Shirley, the estate of Joan Roberta Largen Smelter, the estate of James C. Stanley Senior, the estate of Catherine Willa To, the estate of Leslie K. Walker, the estate of Karen Ellen Walter, the estate of Bruce G. Watson, the estate of William Scott Whitmer, the estate of Hayden Andrew Williams, the estate of Fay Juanita Wright, and the estate of John Stanley Zazira.
Okay. We have heard the, uh, the estates. Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries. Just this one here, Will?
Yeah, just that.
Have somebody new you want to introduce to us?
Uh, yes, council. I, I'd like to introduce it by name. Uh, yes, Council, I'd like to introduce it by name. This is Colleen Stevens. She is serving as our Deputy Supervisor Two position. She's training under Janet Poleshauser, and I think has gone way beyond my expectations for a kind of, I think it's kind of the tradition of fiduciaries, just throw their employees into the wolves, and I didn't want to violate that tradition, so I did exactly that. And she is, she has gone beyond expectation. She is improving at a rapid rate, and I think she'll, she'll serve the county very, very well for, for many years to come.
Well, when I was down there the other day, she seemed pretty happy, and she still does today, so I guess it's not too bad.
We'll, we'll work on that.
We'll work on that.
And absolutely. Well, as I say, you know, we're extremely lucky to have her.
Does she have any fiduciary experience before you?
Not, uh, no, so, well, I mean, she, she-
I'd love to come up with-
That's a good point. Why don't you, why don't you, we'd like to.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Parker.
About my fiduciary experience. So, I have a very wide variety of a background, if you will, but most of my experience is in banking, and I did most recently life insurance on the life insurance, license agent, so, I worked for a financial advisor and dealt with a lot of, you know, opening-
What series do you have? Series seven?
I'm just life insurance.
Life insurance, okay.
So, I, I would put in the three, but I didn't actually process them, that type of thing, so, um, but, yeah.
Cool.
It's very interesting work down there, and it is busy.
Adjective.
I was gonna say, you started in life, now you're at death.
That's right.
So, but Will's doing the right thing by getting us some help in there. His office is very busy, so, I'm looking forward to new employees, too.
With fifty-four, yeah, man, it's-
That's just a snapshot.
Yeah. Those are the, those are the estates that actually chose to go through the entirety of the process.
Oh, really?
Hundreds, if not thousands, more that do not choose to do that.
So, what's a remedy for it? Just notification and-
Right, so, yeah, we, we actually, the, the new law I mentioned to the Council last month, the small estates affidavit, I, I believe in time will lessen that burden when you have folks who have literally five hundred dollars in a bank account and that's it. You shouldn't have to go through full three stages of probate for that, you shouldn't have to get bonded for that. So, the small estates affidavit, I believe, is gonna help us out there. To answer your question more directly, technically, by not adhering to the code's allocated time, technically, that's a misdemeanor, and it's a chargeable five hundred dollar fine, of course, you know, I believe the prosecuting attorneys and their office have bigger fish to fry, as it were, but what the most immediate remedy is, is that the administrators and executors kind of waive their ability to compensate themselves through the probate process, and you're out of time, or the time element anyway, you cannot claim any kind of compensation for your fees.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
One more thing before we leave.
Yes.
As you know, Maria Childers agreed to come back and work through last calendar year to help out, help Will, because, you know, Will had all of four days training with the net, and then he assumed the role of fiduciary supervisor, and then we went through the, the whole probate situation, and we had periods where we had a staff of three with two members out, and Will was only there, and we worked with, with your department, the council department, we helped out with some phones and things like that. When we put together this year's budget, we included that contractual position in, in the budget. Maria is no longer filling that position, so Will does have a recommendation to backfill that contractual position, which certainly would assist the fiduciary office, and he and I discussed the options. Are you doing support?
He looks so happy even without the help, though, you know?
That's true. Well, I need to work on my poker face, I think, a little more, but a, as Mr. Davis alluded, Mr. Martin Keaseker, who, as, up until recently, was the head of trusts for what was formerly known as BB&amp;T and now Truist, and he did that for a period of over twenty-five years. He has a longstanding relationship with the Brooklyn County Fiduciary Office and has, I don't mind telling you, gotten me out of a few, I have no idea, I better call Marty situations. So, it's, it's, I think he will help significantly. Again, it's gonna be a part-time basis, he is informing, he is very keen in retirement, loves it, but feels a sense of obligation to help out the fiduciary's office in the time of transition as we're training new staff, and, you know, as, I'm fortunate, and I'm sure Colleen can attest to this, there's really not a lot of training I can do prior to a person coming into the office and actually getting, rolling up their sleeves and doing fiduciary work. It's really a-
On the job.
Yes, exactly. So, I think having Marty in the office, both for support staff purposes, as well as an ear and a voice of wisdom there for folks coming in, I think that would be extremely helpful.
And as the Councils, we're, we do have, we're down, Will is down, fiduciary, we're named a position of vacancy, which we recruited before, and I think he and Penny have completed the interviews, put that recommendation to the Council next week on that. Again, by the time this person is hired and onboard and trained and, you know, it could be a learning for the ball, so this would actually give them a lift, and it is budgeting.
Well, welcome aboard, Colleen.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'll be down again this evening.
We look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay.
Would the Council like to take action on the contractual, just so we have-
You need a motion on it?
Yes, sir.
To move, a motion move forward and-
Yes, sir, to, to bring on Marty Keaseker in a contractual position at thirty hours, thirty dollars an hour.
So, starting August fifth, is that what you're saying?
Uh, it would, his first start date, I believe, would be Tuesday on-
On the same-
August third.
Tuesday on, there you go, second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
You have to write that.
You too.
You too, thank you. We are real early. Want to break it, or do you want to-
Looks like you got a half hour break.
Kind of waiting for someone.
Okay. Well, we'll be on break until the next one.
We are back in session and we have Summer Barrett to give us a little bit of a discussion on 2022 legislative priorities.
As the council's aware, we will be scheduling your legislative summit soon. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to have Summer come in here, maybe talk about what happened last session, a little bit about what has transpired since last session, particularly during the arums. And we've scheduled it so that she's here first. Next week Jennifer Piercy from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia will be here. And then on August 26 Jonathan Adler from the West Virginia Association of Counties will be here. So that by the end of August, everyone should have a general idea of what next year's session is going to look like. Is that pretty clear?
Okay. Summer, all yours.
Well, I think Alan had sent around the priority list that we kind of worked all of during the last session. So I'll just go through, I guess to start, go through things that did work, signed into law that we were advocating for, and then go from there if that's okay with you guys, I don't know if there's a future killer way you want to handle it. But if you have questions as I'm going through this, definitely stop me, don't hesitate to interrupt me. So one of the first things that was passed in the session was a county priority that would place a tax on Airbnb, VRBOs and other, I guess they call it the marketplace facilitators of the homes in our area that are rented out. So this bill, I guess, had been introduced a few times before, once actually passed and the governor ended up vetoing it. In this past session, we changed, we worked on it and changed it prior to session to have the tax remitted directly to the county. So it doesn't go through the tax department at all, those funds come directly to the county, which was kind of a concern of the state tax department. So once we changed that bill, the legislature quickly passed it and that went into effect to June 7th. So I have tried to get, you know, some estimates for an annual revenue that that might generate for the county. But the CBB doesn't have a really good estimate. And I don't know if you guys have pursued an estimate from anyone else, but we obviously know there will be increased revenue from that. The second thing that made it across the finish line was the redistribution of the tipping fees. That was something that had been introduced several times before. And a lot of legislators had a little concern with, you know, they were from an area that didn't have as much growth and population as we did. So we worked out with the help of a lot of the representatives in our area, house leadership, to have the first 25% of those fees distributed evenly across all counties. And then the remaining 75% distributed on a per capita basis, which really helps counties like Berkeley County that have a larger population. Obviously, if you have a larger county and more people, your landfills are having more trash put in them. So they have a greater need for those resources than a smaller county. Sorry, I thought you had a question.
No, just scratching my head there.
And then the third...
I generally don't raise my hand, I just start talking.
The third thing that we focused on that I actually don't think was even an initial priority on the priority list. They must have added that at some point very early on in the discussions, was adding the ballot referendum option for amending our fire fees. This was a really unique situation because a lot of counties don't have a fire fee. They'll have, they have their fire fees set up in various ways. So we really had to do a lot of educating of the members as to how our fire fees were structured and the reason why we wanted the ability to place something like this on the ballot in the future. And so it took a lot, it took a lot of our time, my time, but it was obviously worth it. Because now, you know, if the local fire board decides to pursue any type of amendment to the fire fee, they'll come before you and have that put on a future ballot. And then the people of Berkeley County can have a say so in that.
So that's a real good, that's a real interesting topic too. And we've talked about that a little bit. Have we, have we decided how we're going to approach that?
Yes.
So do we have a plan? Because I would think if that's something, if that's something that's going to go on the ballot in this coming year, that that's something that's got to be an educational process.
I know Doug has been having some conversations with Hunter. We're also expecting our side that's from two BFDs requesting additional career staff. So certainly all that's going to play. So there's been some, there's been no formal discussions or concerns. One of the things I'd recommend to Doug is that maybe we schedule a joint meeting with our board, council, have a joint meeting with our board to discuss how to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't you think we need to do that sooner than later? I mean, if we don't do that relatively soon, marketing and, I mean, that's something that we need to get the word out about how the money, we got to analyze the revenue it's going to generate, not only analyze the revenue it's going to generate, but how we're going to use that revenue to benefit the fire services moving forward. I mean, that whole plan is a process in itself. And if we're going to market it, we need to know that plan process before we start marketing it and letting the public know what the thought process is with that money.
Right.
And then that's a whole process as well.
Especially when you have a new group or new residences moving into Berkeley County from another full service area. And they pay a fire fee, they're thinking that they're going to have the coverage like they had maybe where they came from. And that's, and that's something that...
We're in the process of trying to determine, you know, if we lose the 35% safer reimbursement in February. So the safer funds will be depleted in early 2022. So we know what the cost will be based on current staffing. But as you know, Back Creek has already asked you several years ago for 24/7 coverage. If we add the two additional fire stations in, you know, that's...
I love that. We are back in session and we have Summer Barrett to give us a little bit of a discussion on 2022 legislative priorities.
As the council's aware, we will be scheduling your legislative summit soon. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to have Summer come in here, maybe talk about what happened last session, a little bit about what has transpired since last session, particularly during the arums. And we've scheduled it so that she's here first. Next week, Jennifer Piercy from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia will be here. And then on August 26, Jonathan Adler from the West Virginia Association of Counties will be here. So that by the end of August, everyone should have a general idea of what next year's session should end up to look like. Is that pretty good?
Okay. Summer, all yours.
Well, I think Alan had sent around the priority list that we kind of worked all of during the last session. So I'll just go through, I guess to start, go through things that did work, signed into law that we were advocating for, and then go from there if that's okay with you guys. I don't know if there's a particular way you want to handle it. But if you have questions as I'm going through this, definitely stop me. Don't hesitate to interrupt me. So one of the first things that was passed in the session was a county priority that would tax, place a tax on Airbnb, VRBOs and other, I guess they call it the marketplace facilitators of the homes in our area that are rented out. So this bill, I guess, had been introduced a few times before, once actually passed and the governor ended up vetoing it. In this past session, we changed, we worked on it and changed it prior to session to have the tax remitted directly to the county. So it doesn't go through the tax department and all those funds come directly to the county, which was kind of a concern of the state tax department. So once we changed that bill, the legislature quickly passed it and that went into effect to June 7. So I have tried to get, you know, some estimates for an annual revenue that that might generate for the county. But the CBB doesn't have a really good estimate. And I don't know if you guys have pursued an estimate from anyone else, but we obviously know there will be increased revenue from that. The second thing that made it across the finish line was the redistribution of the tipping fees. That was something that had been introduced several times before. And a lot of legislators were, had a little concern with, you know, they were from an area that didn't have as much growth and population as we did. So we worked out with the help of a lot of the, a lot of the representatives in our area, House leadership, to have the first 25% of those fees distributed evenly across all counties. And then the remaining 75% distributed on a per capita basis, which really helps counties like Berkeley County that have a larger population. Obviously, if you have a larger county and more people, your landfills are having more trash put in them. So they have a greater need for those resources than a smaller county. Sorry, I thought you had a question.
No, just scratching my head now.
And then the third-
I generally don't raise my hand. I just start talking.
The third thing that we focused on that I actually don't think was even an initial priority on the priority list. They must have added that at some point very early on in the discussions, was the adding the ballot referendum option for amending our fire fees. This was a really unique situation because a lot of counties don't have a fire fee. They'll have, they have their fire fees set up in various ways. So we really had to do a lot of educating of the members as to how our fire fees were structured and the reason why we wanted the ability to place something like this on the ballot in the future. And so it took a lot, it took a lot of our time, my time, but it was obviously worth it. Because now, you know, if the local fire board decides to pursue any type of amendment to the fire fee, they can come before you and have that put on a future ballot. And then the people of Berkeley County can say, have a say so in that.
So that's a, that's a real good, that's a real interesting topic too. And we've talked about that a little bit. Have we, have we decided how we're going to approach that?
Yes.
So do we have a plan? Because I would think if that's something, if that's something that's going to go on the ballot in this coming year, that that's something that that's got to be an educational process.
I know Doug has been having some conversations with Hunter. We're also expecting correspondence from two BFDs requesting additional career staff. So certainly all that's going to come into play. So there's some, been some, there's been no formal discussions or concerns. One of the things I'd recommend to Doug is that maybe we schedule a joint meeting with our board. Council, have a joint meeting with our board to discuss how to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't you think we need to do that sooner than later? I mean, if we don't do that relatively soon, marketing and, I mean, that's something that we need to get the word out about how the money, you gotta, we gotta analyze the revenue it's going to generate, not only analyze the revenue it's going to generate, but how we're going to use that revenue to benefit the fire services moving forward. I mean, that whole plan is a process in itself. And if we're going to market it, we need to know that plan process before we start marketing it and, and letting the public know what the thought process is with that money. And then that's a whole process as well.
Especially when you have a new group or a new residences moving into, you know, Berkeley County from another full service area. And they pay a fire fee, they're thinking that they're going to have the coverage like they had maybe where they came from. And that's, and that's something that-
We're, we're in the process of trying to determine, you know, if we lose the 35% safer reimbursement in February. So the safer funds will, will be depleted in early 2022. So we know what the cost will be based on current staff. But as you know, Back Creek has already asked you several years ago for 24/7 coverage. If we add the two additional fire stations in, you know, that, that was substantially increased the cost for the career if that's the decision that the council wants to go with. So that's why we have to have that in the discussion.
But I think, yeah, I think that's something, I, I don't see how that could even happen before the general election at this point. Do you?
No. But, but you know, everybody, we need to get everybody to the table to determine what the needs are, you know, determine what the cost will be and then move forward, you know. Everybody, everybody needs our voice.
But we probably ought to put together some type of timeline, working backwards from the general election right now on what, what goals we have to meet in order to make that happen at that point. How long we'll have for, to put it out to the public and how long we'll have to make decisions with the fire departments, all of that. Don't you think? Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. It's-
Yeah. I think that was a big accomplishment.
Yeah, and it certainly took up most of my time in Charleston during the last session. So I, I think it's a good thing that you guys are talking about it.
And if the council will remember, that wasn't one of your legislative priorities several years ago. You actually decided to remove it last year only because Council President Philbin came and said, until the volunteer fire department stepped up and said that, yeah, we really want it, we weren't going to pursue it. And Matthew and Doug and Summer and I met with the Fire and Rescue Association and the decision to pursue it was a result of that, of that meeting.
Yeah, and that was a really-
And Summer and Matthews, the two that really made it.
That was a, that was a really important part of it because those fire chiefs all ended up offering a letter and signing a letter of support. And we were able to take that letter to Charleston and show that, you know, our volunteer fire departments were asking for this and really needing it. It wasn't, you know, really a request that initially generated from the council level. And that helped ultimately with the passage. Because I, I don't think without their support, I don't know that it would have passed. So that was really, I'm glad we were able to meet with them and get their support.
Recently, we just went back and forth on being part of the County Commissioners Association and the Association of Counties. And, and we were back on board now, at least, at least for this, this next year. Did, did you get support from them on this issue?
Yeah, so this is actually a really good example of a way that the County Commissioners Association was really helpful. We faced a little bit of pushback from other counties in their local fire departments because they don't have this fee structure. So they really didn't, like I said, it was kind of, it was a, a lot of educating that had to happen, even with the Volunteer Fire Association, because even they didn't really understand why we were asking for this or why we needed it. I mean, both because their fee structures were different, but also because a lot of these places aren't faced with the issues that we're faced with in Berkeley County of growth and not having enough people to keep up with the haul volume. So I, I did work with Jennifer Piercy from the County Commissioners Association to get her to kind of get the other counties on board to say, you know, we're all supportive of this. This wouldn't hurt our county. Even if it wouldn't necessarily help them at the time, it could help them in the future and it was certainly not going to hurt any county. So having her support and her there to say, you know, all of our commissioners are on board with this, we're, you know, they're all supportive of it was very helpful. And she was always, you know, anytime I say, would say, I, I need you to call so and so or I need you to talk to so and so or come to a meeting, she was always supportive of us.
Good.
So those were the three that got through the complete process during the regular session. And then I just kind of wanted to briefly touch on two bills that didn't complete the legislative process, but were introduced and got some traction. And that's the county sales tax that I know you guys have talked about many times before. It did pass the Senate and then did not ultimately pass the House. But I think the progress that was made, it has, you know, the education we did on it was very helpful. And I think I've mentioned this to you guys before. There's always talk of connecting that 1% sales tax, the ultimate removal, if the voters decide to remove, or to give the legislature the ability to remove the personal property taxes. Obviously, the state's going to have to make the counties whole and then give them the ability to raise revenue in some way. There's been a lot of talk about connection between those two things. So ultimately, you know, we'll work on that again in the next session and see if we can convince them that it's a really important thing for like all counties really, but especially a county like Berkeley County.
Summer, do, and you, you have a better feel for what the legislators look at? One of the things that Doug and I were talking about last night is, he wanted me to ask if he thought would be helpful if we found out what the, kind of the surrounding counties and states were doing as far as sales tax goes.
Yeah.
State, local sales tax, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia, also Frederick County, Virginia, Washington County, Maryland, and Frederick County, Virginia, because we know that it's, it's higher.
Yeah. Yes, I think that's-
And maybe they don't care.
I know, I think that's helpful. And we certainly referenced that a lot, especially when the legislature started talking and looking into this, the income tax that they were discussing during the last session. A lot of that was also connected with the sales tax discussions because one of their solutions was, well, we'll have to raise, ultimately raise the state sales tax. There was a lot of talk about, you know, what's the, around us and surrounding states, what's the base level of sales tax and then what are the local sales taxes? So that was definitely something that we talked about. But put into like a document that says, you know, the surrounding states do this or they allow this would be a good way to put, you know, actually on the paper.
And, and I know that some of the pushback that we've got is some of the legislators feel that the municipalities misused or maybe misled them. When they got the passing of the 1 cent sales tax, you know, we've heard that the commitment was made, well, we gave them the 1 cent sales tax, they were going to eliminate the VNO tax, which is my understanding is never the case. The agreement was they would eliminate, they would reduce the VNO tax and the sales tax. And they still don't think that the reduction of VNO tax was adequate. If, if this council provided you with correspondence that said, based on our estimates and projections, a 1 cent across the county's sales tax would generate X number of dollars and this council was committed to use it for public safety. Would that, do you think that would be helpful?
Yes, and I, I know that for sure because that's one of the, I don't know if you all recall, when the Senate had it in their Senate Government Organization, it wasn't right, it's Senate Government Organization, they asked me to testify before the committee to talk about why Berkeley County thought it was important and what the county would use it for. And that was one of the things that they asked about, you know, would you, how would the county use this money? And we, I think we had, I don't know if I'd offered Doug or the parent council about ways that it would be used. So, and it, that definitely was a, was a, a good talking point and to ensure that they know that the money would be used in those ways. So I think, I think the thing we didn't have was an estimate of, of what might be generated with that. But if that, if you have something like that going forward.
In the past, we had a difficult time getting any revenue outreach and tax information from the state tax office. Matthew seems to think that we may have, maybe we have, maybe maybe a little bit more coming now. So we've both worked on, we've been working on that. We've had that discussion.
Yeah, so, I mean, some sort of, even if it's an estimate, would be very helpful. And something you kind of mentioned with, I actually, when I was, during session, I forgot that it was initially on this priority list was county home rule. And that kind of goes into what you were talking about with the, the legislature and their feelings with when they gave municipalities home rule. And that really was the reason why they aren't, don't seem too inclined to bug on the county home rule part of it.
And one of the things that you can bring on, one of the things Doug suggested last night is that we recommend that we be used as a pilot project to eliminate collection of personal property taxes in exchange for additional sales tax. But personal property tax is in the Constitution. So we can't, right, we can't say, well, we'll give up our personal property tax if they let us have it. They can't do that on a case-by-case basis. I totally might bring it up today, but I didn't think we, we had the ability to do that.
Yeah.
So there's nowhere around. Okay.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was talking about when, you know, the next, on the next election, the voters will vote on a constitutional amendment that would change the state's constitution. As you mentioned, it is in the constitution that there are personal property taxes in the county gets those funds. If the voters vote to change that constitutional portion, then it would allow the legislature to remove personal property taxes. There was a lot of talk about how, you know, about doing that if it's passed. Various ways of, you know, allowing a county to choose one or the other or just getting rid of personal property taxes altogether. Who knows what they'll end up deciding. But that's why I think it's important that we figure out what's best for Berkeley County so we can advocate for it to be done that way.
That's a, that's a real good thought process. We're, we're now allowed to put it on a ballot about the fire fees. I, I wonder if it's a possibility that we could get something in the next session that would allow us to have the 1 cent sales tax on the ballot. And if, if so, it could be offered as an option to the public that you could, you could vote no on anything or you could vote yes for the fire fee increase or you could vote yes for the 1 cent sales tax. And if you get the 1 cent sales tax, you wouldn't need to increase the fire fee. It could be funded through the 1 cent sales tax. I mean, that may be, that may be a conversation that we could have moving forward to see, but if-
I've got a feeling they would vote down fire fee and the sales tax.
What's that?
They would vote down the fire fee and the sales tax.
I don't know. I haven't talked to, I, I would say 95% of the people that I've talked to about fire fees and, and fire service are totally willing to pay a little bit more to get some type of service guaranteed. And, and I would say there's probably 50% of the people that I've talked to that don't even know there's not a full-time fire service and are shocked to find out that we don't have a full-time fire service, that we still rely on volunteers. So I, I think it's an educational process. I think you need to, you need to educate the, the community so that they understand that's an issue. But I could be wrong.
I, I like the fact of putting that to the voters, to let them decide. But at the same time, I think that we have to be able to say, this is what's projected and this is what we're willing to do with those, with those monies. I think you have to be very clear in, in whether those dollars will be spent and that it won't be put towards other, other expenses, that it will be strictly pertaining to emergency services in a way or whatever else you decided, you know, to go towards.
Right, but I think you need to explain and I agree. If you're, if you're going to take 85% and spend emergency services, 15% to spend to, you know, something else, you just need to make sure it's defined so that the public has a clear picture of what you're talking about.
And that's all part of what we were talking about, of education, educating, helping.
Right, but we'd still have to be, it would still have to be a legislative move to allow us to put the 1 cent sales tax on the ballot, I, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, even as it stands now, even if the majority of the taxpayers said, yes, or will agree, 1 cent sales tax, you can vote it on the ballot.
Proper legislation, right.
Right. And, and even, you know, it's been discussed about giving back some of the monies that we already received. This is the coal severance tax dollar. You know, send those dollars back to where they really truly, where it came from, number one. Number two, where they really truly needed. You know, don't, don't send those, the coal severance money up here when they're in fact starving for dollars in Southern West Virginia and where the coal came from starving, pour the gas down. No other way. Send, send the dollars back, yeah.
And the other bill that it actually passed both the House and the Senate ultimately died on the last night of session was, there was a request and there has been, I think this was probably the second or the third year that a bill has been produced to, to do this. It came from Tim Saya with the David Port Center to allow faulty home confinement officers to be viewed as voluntary officers. They have the ability to carry a firearm when they go into places like a school or a government building or something, or across state lines. And like I said, the bill did actually pass both chambers, but then died on the last night of session because they had sent the bill back and forth so many times and added some technical errors that they just couldn't, they didn't have enough time. It was 10:45 on the last night of session and we, I was running back and forth between the House and the Senate trying to somehow get it fixed. But it just, between the two chambers, they couldn't work it out in the last hour or two of session. So, you know, I, we need to get those fixes made and then get it introduced at the beginning of session. And it shouldn't have a problem, like I said, it hasn't passed those chambers. So that should not be a problem in the next session. And then there were also a few county priorities that were put into study resolution. And just in case that concept isn't a familiar one, they, in the off-season, they'll have, you know, studies done into a certain, a particular topic. You know, something in a bill they think is a really good concept, but needs more research and discussion, they'll put it into a study resolution. So two of the things that we were advocating for and working on ended up, portions of them or all of it was put into study resolution. So the legal notices, you know, that was a really big thing that the county was hoping to see some action on. And the bill did ultimately pass, but it passed in a very watered down way. It really, the only thing, the final version of that bill did was directing the state auditor to create a website and then have the state agencies start to put their legal notices on the website.
So they helped themselves, but not the counties?
Well, it, it actually just caused, I mean, I see, see your point, but they did not remove the requirement that they still publish in newspapers. So that, it really was in their view, in the legislature's view, it was a way to start to see if people use the website and how it would work. So all those state agencies still do have to publish in papers like everyone else. So I say it's a step in the right direction. The rest of the bill was put into a study resolution to start to research what other states are doing. What is actually legally, what legally meets the requirement of public notice? Because there is, you know, requirements at even a national level. So what actually qualifies as public notice was a big question. If we post it on the internet and people have to go look for it rather than getting it, you know, in their mailbox to something, does that qualify as public notice? That would be- That was, there were a lot of questions about that. There were a lot of questions about access to internet in our state. You know, will people actually be able to get onto these websites?
So, so I guess what you're saying is these study resolutions are giving you a tool to look at this next time and provide these, this type of information to legislators, legislators that, uh, you know, this is, this is how much of the population sees this, or you can, what, what do they call them? Uh, al-algorithms or whatever?
Algorithms.
Algorithms, yeah.
A lot of times for these, they will have a, a special, uh, during an interim meeting, they'll dedicate a meeting to, you know, calling in witnesses or calling in, um, experts on the subject to talk about it. So actually with the other bill, the mental hygiene transports and the hearing delays, that was another thing that we worked on all session long and it kind of seemed like it was going to pass, but then ultimately the House decided to put it into a study resolution because as the bill progressed, they put more and more things into it because they started to realize that the entire mental health system in the state of West Virginia is very convoluted, it's very archaic, um, and it really needs an entire overhaul. And they started to realize if they fixed one piece of it, it would just make something else not work or, um, not function in the way it was intended to. So they took that entire thing and have begun already in May. When they had the interim meetings, there was an entire meeting dedicated to the discussion of, uh, this system in our state. And, um, the Sheriff's Association testified in that committee and talked about the difficulties that sheriff's departments across the state face with transporting, uh, those people and, and the cost impact on counties. So it's definitely, they kind of at the end of it realized that a one-size-fits-all approach is probably not going to work, which we find a lot, and it's actually good that they acknowledge that. Um, so that it, hopefully in this process, we can continue to tell them, you know, how a way it would be easiest and most cost-effective for Berkeley County and, and really all of the counties that are far from state facilities. Um, so it's, it's an ongoing process and they're still working on it, but it's good that they're.
So it doesn't allow you to give them additional information though, right?
Yeah, yeah, and they end up having those interim meetings where we can really dive into it and talk more about it. So those two things are not, uh, dead by any means, they're still very much alive and being worked on. Uh, and then there are two things that were not taken up by the legislature, but we've had a lot of conversation about and, uh, I think we can make progress on them in the next session. And that's the property tax rollback that, uh, we talked about a lot in the last year. Um, I've already had conversations with a lot of members of the House and Senate and there certainly is interest in, um, you know, introducing it in the next session. And then the nine-one-one fees, what, I think even with the council, we kind of started to realize as we talked prior deception, that the structure of the nine-one-one fees in the state was a little more difficult than just one piece of legislation can fix. Um, I, I think that probably needs a study resolution, uh, and some sort of interim study because, yeah, the way, I, I know you guys get some funding from, um, cell phones, there's a nine-one-one fee on those, but then we're also still, we also still have the nine-one-one fees on landlines, which very few people have landlines, but if you have both, you're paying, technically paying the service twice. Um, so it's a very, it's a big webbed one weave, I think. Um, and it's something that I have talked with a few of the members of the Gov. Board Committee in the House, the chairman of that committee, and he kind of indicated that he would like his, uh, team to look at what other states do and how they've mo-modernized their nine-one-one fee structure. Because like, you know, and, and before we had cell phones, before we had the cell phone, nine-one-one cellular fee, and it was all based on landlines, most people had landlines, so it was, it was an effective way to set those fees. But now it's not really an effective way to set fees. Um, so there really needs to be some study into what other states have done to modernize that, that setup.
And, and, and I hope they understand that our biggest issue is not so much the fee imposed on cell phones, the three oh four cell phone number. It's the cell phone numbers that are Maryland and Virginia and Pennsylvania. Because we don't get anything from theirs. They still tax our nine-one-one system, like all nine-one-one calls. And, and they're still county residents, but because they have a cell phone number that's not a three oh four, I think there's another.
That's why we're, we're like better.
Six nine eight number now, they've also had. Um, we don't collect anything from their cell phone. So that's, that's our biggest issue. We collected the nine-one-one fee on every cell phone that's in the county. That makes a big difference to us.
Well, unless it went to the, um, what, electric meter.
Went to the electric meter, that solved a lot.
That would, yeah.
Wait, we have, that was, that was the initial idea, um, the power companies are not funded, as you imagine.
Of course they're not, you know, to think out of the box, you're still providing the same service.
That's no different than what Comcast is doing.
Right.
I mean, Comcast pays us a franchise fee. Um, so, you know, in your monthly bill, there's a, there's a franchise fee and then every quarter they, they collect it, they, they receive a stipend for collecting that and then we distribute it. So.
Either that or you could just add it on to, um, added, charge a fee to the electric company per meter. Don't have them collect anything, just charge them for it per meter and they would in turn pass it on to the customer. Then they're not collecting anything for us, they're just paying their bills.
Senator Trump, um, on several pages, you know, talked about the property tax rollback. He, Senator Trump probably knows more about the property tax, the tax rollback, the history and he agrees it's canonically pathetic and in fact his opinion should be abolished altogether. In the past, he agreed to kind of take up the calls and then reduce the bill for us. Is he still willing to, to do that?
Yes, I, I have had many discussions with Senator Trump. Um, he does seem willing to, to be helpful with that. I think we just need to probably start a little earlier in the session and get it, make sure it's introduced. And I'd like to also get the person introduced, the same bill introduced in the House. That just seems to work a lot better when you introduce it in both chambers and see which one moves. Um, so we'll, we didn't take that approach in the last session, but that's what we're counting to do next.
And I've talked to Jennifer and she's gonna be here next week. Um, that's going to be one of their legislative priorities. It was last year, I think they intend to pick it up again this year, so.
But there was also, wasn't it a couple of years ago, there was something going on with the state police, trying to do something with that whole nine-one-one fee?
Well, that was nine-one-one fee, they wanted a bigger piece of the pie.
I think one fifty control.
Yeah. Um, because we don't get the, you know, the first, some of the money goes into the, um, maintenance of all the communications towers and then the state police, they get a penny off the top and they wanted that increase. But yeah, like Eddie said one time, they wanted full control of that. And that, you know, that was swell, but.
Uh, so that is the, that was the county, the end of the county priority list. There was two other things I wanted to just briefly mention and that. The first one is, uh, I think, I think we probably talked about this, uh, in our first meeting, you know, as a, the whole council. Um, and that was that not only would it be important to be advocating for the county priorities, but also being present at the Capitol on a daily basis to keep track of other bills that pop up that either the county does support and we can, you know, advocate for, maybe we didn't think of something and someone else introduces a bill that would be great for the county, or perhaps there is legislation, well, not perhaps, there's always legislation that's introduced that would could potentially be detrimental to our county. Uh, so there were a lot of instances like that and I just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of them that, uh, other entity, entities in our county were able to utilize, you know, having a presence in the Capitol, uh, particularly our nine-one-one center. Um, I, I think I became one of Jen Swisher's best friends for those two months because there seemed to be a lot of legislation that, uh, was affecting the nine-one-one dispatch centers. Um, so there were two things in particular that we were able to help, um, both advocate for and get changed. And one was how, uh, when a fencing, it seems like a very ministerial thing in the grand scheme of life, but when a, when fencing is damaged, whether it's like from a fire accident or something, the legislature was trying to place the burden for notifying landowners on the nine-one-one center. And, you know, Jen contacted me and said that it's impossible for us to do, but it also would add a lot of work for us that we don't have enough people to handle. Um, it really should be on the responding officers to alert the landowners that their fencing has been damaged. Um, so it had passed the House in that way and the Senate, uh, we were able to work with them and get it changed, point out the reasons why this was important to our dispatch centers to get changed. Um, and they, you know, they understood and did change it before they passed the bill. And then when it was sent back to the House, the House concurred on those changes. So I just kind of wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, we go down there with a list of priorities, but we're able to really help other people to, um. There was another issue with towing districts that they were trying to implement with the county, would have to draw towing districts and you would have a list of people that the nine-one-one dispatch center would choose from. And it would kind of be, you know, ranked in order and they'd have to go through the list. Um, and it was more work for the county, more work for the dispatch center, just a lot of, a lot more burden on everyone. Um, and so we were able to kill that bill and then they tried to put the same language into another bill and we helped, uh, kill that bill too. So I just kind of wanted to point out that a lot of things pop up, that being there every single day and, you know, searching through all the bills and just hearing what people are saying is really, it's helpful for the entire county. Uh, and then the last thing is, uh, the fund situation that happened in the interim session, um, or the special session that was called, um, we were able to have the regional jail per diem added to the governor's special session call, I think that was in June now, my bones are running together. But, you know, it was something that somehow was overlooked in the process of, you know, going all of the different organizations, uh, really just, uh, accidentally overlooked it. And it was going to cost the county a lot of money. Um, so we immediately got to work and it was brought to our attention. Um, and we, I worked really hard with the members of the interim committee that deals with regional jail issues, um, to get them to put pressure on the governor, we put pressure on the governor's office, um, to get them to add that bill to a special session call because if it was not changed by July first, that ends, that daily per diem rate would have increased. And I think you guys estimated about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that it would have cost the county in this, I guess now the current fiscal year, um, that wasn't planned for. So I think that's a really big, another good thing to highlight that, you know, having this, someone that can do this and kind of be on call at any given notice to go down to Charleston and advocate for these things is a really important thing for our county and ends up saving the county a lot of money along the way.
Do we know, is that fee now going to be, um, increased, uh, in the next year?
So this, the bill that was passed in the special session only applies to this next fiscal year.
It just extends to Capitol One.
Yep.
So, so it's gotta be part of our next year's budget. Is, do we know what they're going to increase? Because, I mean, if, if, I mean, there's, if they were planning on doing it this year, next year they're gonna have a shortfall because of the budgeting that they put forward for this year already, so.
I think the intent is to, to put something more permanent in place.
Yeah, so I was actually, you know, gonna say this really, uh, should be, in, in my opinion, one of our top priorities going into the next session because really this is not the only issue when we talk about region, our regional jails and there, there are a lot of other issues, not just with our regional jail, but really across the state. You've mentioned the regional jails at the Capitol. People kind of twinge because it's such a hot topic right now and everyone's talking about it. So I think it's a good time to really capitalize on that and really come up with a solution that we would like. Um, and, and advocate for, you know, a big change to the way that those regional jails are set up and funded. And there has to be some sort of permanent solution. Um, you know, counties like Berkeley County that have the ability to pay their jail bill are really being, um, hurt in the long run, whereas the counties that aren't making those payments don't necessarily feel that because they're, they're not, they, they aren't paying in terms of.
When this is all being bantered on the list, or there were some counties out there that said they can charge like a lot, we're not, we haven't been paying it. It really doesn't affect us because we can't pay the bill as it exists now.
Yeah, and I think that's a, an important thing to highlight with the legislature. I don't think a lot of people know that. Um, and then counties like Berkeley County who are able to pay the bill, continue to pay the bill, um.
But there has to be some type of increase. I mean, there, I mean, logic tells you, you can't, I mean, how many years has it been like at the fee that it's at right now?
Uh, I think it was three or four, yeah, four years.
I, I think the argument is, you know, in, we use the state of Maryland as an example, the Maryland state prison system is not funded by the counties, it's funded by the state. It's not on the shoulders of the, of the counties and municipalities to fund a state agency over which they have no control. And I think that's the argument here. The regional jail system is, is funded and staffed by the state. So why does that become a local burden?
No, I, I totally understand what you're saying, but then, but, but the state has to, the state has to be made whole too if they're gonna take that bill, so then they have to have, uh, a revenue source to generate more income in order to be able to pay that bill. Um, I mean, it, it, it's all about, it's all about what comes in and goes out. I mean, they're, you can't, we can't just throw it on them and them pay it because they're not gonna do that.
They're having to use a referendum.
Well, they have the ability to, to raise fees and taxes, you know, on their own. They don't have to go through the legislature. I mean, obviously they, they will, but they don't have to take it to a referendum. You know, they can do those things, you know, and, and I've, I've said for quite a while, this jail bill should not be Berkeley County's jail bill. This belongs to the state of West Virginia, they are there on state charges. It's, it's completely and solely ran by the state. That's who needs to pay the bill.
When they get away with a pen of batteries.
Yes.
That's, and, and we're nothing more than many pens, that's all we are.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is regardless of who's paying the bill, there's gotta be some type of process so that the people that work there can get raised. I mean, if you don't give any more money in four or five years, um, those guys aren't going to be able to stay up. They're not going to be able to stay up with the wages they're being offered across the, uh, across the river.
No, but they're struggling, they're struggling already.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
The system is struggling already.
So, so then you, so then you have, so then you don't have those optimal people working in those jobs that you want to have working in those jobs and, and protecting those people that are there. So, I mean, there's a, regardless of who's paying the bill, there has to be something in place to be able to increase that fee. I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have no interest in the jail at all other than just understand that, how a budget works. And if you're going to, if you're gonna have employees, you gotta, you gotta continue to make more money. I mean, my business, I gotta charge more today than I did, you know, last year. Well, you know, I mean, it just, it just continues to go. And if you strap them by saying that this is all you're gonna get, um, then they have to have less people working. You know, the, the conditions are going to drop, um, and then you're gonna have those type of problems. So it's a, it's a balancing act on, especially when you have people not even paying the bill.
And haven't for a couple of years. It's just not for a couple of months, for a couple of years.
Right.
That some of these counties have not paid their jail bill.
Right.
The good news is this is not an issue that you leave at us. The good news is this is not an issue that you leave to us. All the counties are affected by it. And I know that again, in conversation, recent conversations I've had with Jennifer, I know we've got the issue of association. This is one of their priorities. So I think if we can get, if we can get Summer and Jennifer and Jonathan and Matthew engaged in a lot of these, and Matthews, as you know, has this evolved last year. Matthew was heavily engaged online to Summer and actually is one that kept us abreast of everything. He sits in there all day long. I don't see how he stayed away. Listens to the different subcommittee hearings and things like that. So he knew almost to the mental of his 911 between his, his communications with Summer. So it's worked out pretty well. I propose that we continue that, that communication, that process. But again, Jennifer down here next week and Jonathan down here in three weeks. I think we're finally starting, you know, there's one of the, one of the issues that this council had with the two associations was improved communication, particularly on the legislative side. I actually think this is a step forward actually.
I like the idea of letting the state take it over, but the, the problem with that thought process is the state is doing just the opposite. They're trying to give more to the county at every point they can without allowing us to have any additional resources. So they're, they're taxing our, our financial system even more. So for them to take a load off you, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a good challenge for us. I don't know how successful, that's a good way to fail right there.
I don't know. I mean, it makes perfectly good sense to me. It honestly does, that we should not be, the people of this county should not be paying that jail bill. If they were in their own county charges, I get it. But they're 99% of our own state charges.
No, I, 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 I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, I don't think, I don't think there's any chance that, you know, you're, I think your argument works really good on all unfunded mandates that they give us, that, you know, you, you pose a, you pose an issue for us to take care of, but there's no revenue source to solve that problem.
And, and we've had the conversation where this council is trying to do what we can from a local level to keep people out of the regional jail, particularly the non-wildest offenders through home confinement and date report and things like that. And then our state legislators pass stricter laws to put people, put more people back into jails.
Or more laws.
So we're trying to keep them out, or try to put more in.
Or more laws. Every time there's more laws, you got more court cases, you got more people going into jail.
We've had that conversation. Then it does add additional burden to the prosecuting attorney's office, to the court systems. We need more, we need more mattresses, we need more, you know, circuit judges, and we need more court security officers. We need more assistant prosecuting attorneys.
But, but we, but we want a, and we want a sheriff, we want a sheriff that does a really good job and catches all the bad guys. But now it's costing us money in order to do that.
We'll find that. Just keep them going.
Yeah. Talking about that, little sideline there.
You're right. That would be a very big lift to just have the state suddenly say, okay, we'll, we'll cover all of this. But, I mean, it's important that we're part of, a part of the discussion. And it is going to be a big discussion, both leading up to the next session and in the next session. So it's good to have, you know, a list of these are priorities for our county that we think need to change, you know. So maybe we get some small ones out of it, you know, even if we don't win the entire battle.
Right. I get it.
What my goal is with councils in agreeing by the end of August with working with Summer and Jennifer and Jonathan and Matthew is for this council to have your legislative priorities for 2022 so that we can begin working early on, you know, laying the groundwork for some of this, which is why this is probably the earliest we've actually started all this process.
Yeah. And then to, to that point, I've kind of already started some of those conversations. You know, we know certain things that were priorities before that didn't get across the finish line are still going to be priorities. So, you know, I've already started having discussions about legislation in the next session. So adding to that and being able to really talk about all of the other priorities, it's, would be very helpful.
And I'm assuming this council wants to have your annual legislative summit. It does seem, that and I talked about, you seem to think that having it last year in the executive manner worked out pretty well. Everyone had room to spread out.
Elaine, that's a wrap. I'd like to ask, can I add something to the legislative?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come on up.
Summer, I, I've been trying to come up with funding for recreation in Berkeley County. And I found out that there's outdoor heritage fund, we've done it, it's a $185 million. We've got zero out there. However, when I went back to the source, they have a statewide comprehensive outdoor recreational plan that was finished in 2020. So we're getting ready to do it now. That's the reason I'm telling you now, I'll be a research person. There's two numbers that we need in this plan. We need per square mile, we have 200 from some people per square mile, and we're supposed to have 1,800 acres for recreation. We only have like 4, 500, which we might probably make this eligible for some of this stuff down there, but they seem to keep giving to counties that have state forests and all these other things. So I have you some information here. And I'm not trying to, but I think the density and the acreage, if you can get hold, there's a person's name up there, that has to be added to this plan. And the plan they put out, folks, they had Berkeley County listed as giving monies. And it was for Warm Springs Middle Schools Walking Trail. That's in Berkeley Springs. They don't even know that Berkeley Springs and Berkeley County are two different things. So that's the one issue. And the second issue, the outdoor education group, I'm gonna call the ethics board. They don't post who the trustees are. How can we find out who these people are? There's 11 trustees on that, and I've been trying to find who these people are, to contact them. You can't find them. So there's a couple concerns, but I thought if she could make a contact on that state board, I gave her someone who was the director of public health that works on it, that would be a step to start putting this, there's a lot of money down there.
Maybe you could give that information to Matthew also, because he's working on a lot of recreational issues.
Yeah, because this one here, the state's plan is, it's gonna be the basis for all the stuff that they're supposedly doing, that I researched and found out. So, but I wanted to make that available. I wasn't trying to take over your post, but I thought if we just put an inch under that state plan, just per square mile and the number of acres we need, and we're not there. They keep forgetting we're growing, that they want our money, but they don't want to help us.
And, and I think what's going on right now with the Parks and Rec strategic planning for the future is a great tool for that, to be able to go to them with what you're saying and say, here's the plan for the future, that we do have a plan for it, but we, we need that funding. And that may be a mechanism to get some of the funding.
Well, two criteria was we have to, Berkeley County has to have a comprehensive plan.
Sir, we're getting ready to enter executive session.
And then the second thing is we have to have a landmark position because of section of progress. So we've got both the criteria that's in the comprehensive plan. So, thank you, Summer. I just wanted to make you aware with that state comprehensive plan, like you're talking about, the strategic planning is so important. If we could get our foot in the door as to what the standards are.
Matt, if she, if Elaine gets you that information, can you get it to, what's his name, Truax?
Yeah, Lori.
Troy. Truax, yeah.
Michael Baker, I'm getting you.
Yeah, if you can get it to him, because that would be, that may be a piece of information that he could find useful in, in planning the future. Because he's also looking at funding sources.
This is funding. But again, if we, it keeps going back to this thing. When I finally dug down through umpteen committees, they kept going back to this plan and they don't know who Berkeley County is.
Right. But that's part of those, that's part of their strategic plan they're putting together. It is funding sources. So it'd be beneficial for them to know that.
Matthew, anything you want to add?
I'll just, I just want to just add that I think that the relationship with Summer and as Willie, I agree with Mr. Davis about that. I think it got fairly well for our first go around and then they come over and get better. And I'm not saying that just blow smoke or whatever. It really was helpful and relaying the information to Charleston and getting, getting data to her, trying to help her make the argument stronger. There's some things that, there's some other issues that did, as she mentioned, with rails, with trails that came up, was raised by another senator in another county. The council president and I had talked about the legislation that might be needed there. I also reached out to the commissioner. I guess she is a secretary of the arts, secretary of tourism, a department now. And I made her aware of that legislation. She, she seemed to give a very favorable response about revising the rails, trails, rails, two trails law. There is no rails with trails in, in the state law now. But she was very positive as a response. This is post, post legislative session. But she said to encourage us to reconnect with her as a session approaches about rails with trails, rails, two trails changes that help Berkeley County trail development in our, believe it or not, we do have abandoned trails in the county, abandoned rail tracks in the county actually, that could be turned into trails. And we also have spurs that we could have a rail with trail, which is currently non-existent in all of West Virginia. One of only three states that have any rails with trails in the state of West Virginia.
I guess the crossing in Harpers Ferry would actually be figured Maryland because Harpers, Maryland owns the river, right?
It's connecting, it's connecting two states and two national parks.
Right.
It's, it's not, it's not really involving just either state really. It's involving the CNO Canal and Harpers Ferry National Park. And so it's really just a connection between two national parks. Yes, it's listed as West Virginia there and the, and the list, but it's, it's a very anomaly situation.
Right.
So there is a real interesting question about whether the law of West Virginia says whatever, whatever is authorized, it's state law you're allowed to do. If it's not specifically authorized, you're not necessarily allowed to do it. So there's a real question as to whether it's, as to why rails with trails just never has to be afforded in West Virginia. So that is one thing that I will say, could see some effort there with that. But it impacts all of West Virginia, maybe not all counties.
Thank you, Matt. I need five minutes of executive session with no action to be taken.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We are in executive session.
Thank you, Summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everything else, though? Everything else, though?
Alrighty, we're back in section, in session. And we're out of executive session, and no action is taken. Mr. Barnhart?
I guess there's no public comment?
No, any, yes, any. No public comment. No public here.
Mr. President, I'm in recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.